Microphones. All right, welcome, everybody. We have a development proposal for 324 Route 125 this evening. The project proposes three buildings on a seven and a half acre site. Could you guys give us an overview again to kind of just bring everybody back up to speed? And then maybe we can go through comments.
If you could just press the red, there you go.
And introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Page. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers, here representing our client, Revolution Real Estate. Subject parcel, like you said, is at 324 New Hampshire Route 125 in Brentwood. Current site features a large gravel access driveway, a gravel parking area. There's a few buildings on site. There's one steel building currently home to hobby tracks. And then there's two older sawmill buildings that aren't in use right now. There's a wetland complex to plan left. That was the subject of remediation efforts that were cleared by the zoning board. A new wetland line has been drawn. We are showing the revised wetland setback at 75 feet going forward. We're proposing three commercial buildings. Building number one is six contractor garage units. Building number two, three contractor garage units. And building number three is an 1,800 square foot office. It's intended to be a leasing office for the site. We are under the allowable cover. We are over the required parking onsite. Site's to be serviced by an onsite well and an onsite septic system. We're working through designing both of those systems. There's a drainage system to contain the stormwater generated onsite that is within the 75-foot wetland buffer. And we are in front of the zoning board on their June 2 meeting, I believe, requesting relief for work within the buffer there. Like we said earlier, we're working through comments received from TEC and from the town planner. Wayne Morrell of Jones and Beach actually met with the town planner to clarify a few of those comments. We still have work to do to make those changes in the plan set, but at first glance, it doesn't seem like there's going to be any problems making those changes happen in the plan set. As identified at the design review, it will require a DOT driveway permit. We have filed for that, so that is pending. Let's see how quick District 6 responds to us. Yes, and like I said, we're in front of the zoning board on the 2nd of June. So tonight, we're here requesting that the application be accepted. And also on my to-do list is that we schedule a time for the site walk. You know, we talked about that last time in February, and there was like two foot of snow at that point. So I think we're safe to schedule that now. Yeah.
Just for process.
We should, before we continue, we probably should have a motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Glenn, do we want to start with your comments?
Yeah. Do you want me to go over them, or do you want me?
That's a good idea.
You will cut down.
Sure.
Can you start with our planner's comments?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, any response?
So the first comment was regarding a butters on the cover sheet. We spoke about showing that on the locust map rather than a big list of a butters, so we can make those changes pretty easily. Impact fee endorsement block, we have added to the plans, not shown on this plan set yet. We did add that. We are aware of the requirements to the existing conditions plan, both for the surveyor stamp and the wetland scientist certification. Emergency key box location, that'll be added probably to building number three. It'll be right on the corner of the office. That'll be easily accessible.
Can we just?
Sure.
Wayne and I spoke about this, and all we want is a note that says there is an emergency key box on site that was agreed to with the fire department and police department. We don't want you to show us where that is.
Understood.
We don't want some engaging burglar to know right where he is.
I got you.
It'll just be a note.
So that was for number five. Number six was a note about the tenants. That can be added. Number seven was a note about use and the building type. We're working on getting those answers from the building manufacturer.
Sorry, just a quick clarification. The note was detailing change in Tennessee, N-N-C. Is that to notify when there is?
Correct. Number eight, a note indicating the required annual inspections from the fire department. That can be added, no problem. Showing two approved test pits within the 4K area. We have gone out and we've dug those pits, so those will be shown visually on the plans in the coming revisions. Number 10, we talked about the DOT driveway permit being required. Again, that's, has been filed. Number 11 is in regards to the residential lot. I guess it'd be the southeast of the subject parcel. We recognize that it should be a 50-foot buffer, and we are working to revise the plans. So that building will shift. We don't suspect it will shift much. We, I can't remember the exact dimensions, but they were pretty close. Yeah. And number 12 is about submitting mylar's at the end. And 13 is about the stormwater basin in the buffer, which we are seeking relief at the ZBA.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board on Glenn's comments before we look at TEC's?
Glenn, you'll probably provide a memorandum to the ZBA to discuss the...
Yeah, I started that yesterday.
Okay, yeah. Seemingly, a site walk would be of great value to everyone.
And I think we talked about staking building corners. Is there anything else we'd like to see?
Would you like to set a date for that site walk after the ZBA hearing?
Wait to set it then, or the date after the hearing? Because we can set it tonight.
I just wasn't sure how the board felt about doing a site walk on something that didn't have ZBA approval yet. I mean, that's completely at your behest. I just...
Right. We're not making any judgments as to the approval of the plan, so it seems reasonable to go ahead and have the site walk. Although you may be held up with some of your state permits for a while. You may not be in a real rush to accomplish this. What's your timeline?
Well, as soon as possible, but the DOT driveway permit is expected to take a little bit.
Right.
So what, maybe, Chris, you're right. Maybe it'd be a good idea to set a date now before you go summer and people are on vacation.
Yeah, always good.
And we can always push it off if we need to.
Yeah, good point.
Sorry.
Members of the board, I think we would like to request they have the site walk soon and later. I think it would be really important for the board members to see the status of what the material looks like out there now. We can show you what the test pits were. And I think it'd be beneficial for any board members that go to the zoning board to see the status of that prior to the zoning board, so they can understand that there is no buffer right now. That's the reason behind what the request for the variance was. So I think it'd be very important for the board to see this soon and later. Thank you.
And we don't typically go to zoning board hearings as a board. You know, people may go, and Glenn may provide information, but we don't go and speak one way or the other on a proposal. I get your point, but...
The ZBA has, you know, every right to request a site walk of their own. But I mean, this weekend's kind of a quick turnaround. People haven't planned, so looking at the June calendar.
Just to clarify, what's the date for the ZBA hearing?
June 2nd.
So it would probably be after that.
Right.
Right with your glasses on, can you see the June calendar? It's a Saturday.
It's like the 5th, 12th, 19th. Oh, no, I was looking July. Sorry.
I mean, what do people have up for plans? I mean, this is 7th work, either 12th is another date.
Knowing that we're not going to be able to do it this coming week, we have a preference in June. Other, other days. Can people do the 14th?
That should work for me.
Nine o'clock on the 14th?
Yeah, that's on my calendar.
What else would you guys like to see marked? Is the drive, how is the driveway changing? Is that something that we should see marked out?
I mean, it's mostly in the same spot, same general area. The alignment's a little different. Might be able to get some centerline shots when we're out there.
I think it's helpful to see the property line, so we can see where things are in relation to neighbors. You already mentioned the buildings. Any major shifts in the driveway would be helpful.
We also have an app that you'll be able to see the plans, and you'll be able to watch us walk around and that sort of stuff. So might not be staked in the ground, but we'll at least have some sort of idea where we are.
Was that a motion for June 14th?
It'd be.
Does that motion have a second?
Do we usually do a motion for scheduling a site walk?
I like to see a motion that everybody is in agreeance, that that's the day of the site walk.
The public is warned that they were going to have a site walk, and so we'll have a...
Yeah, and it'll get, yeah, well, it has to be noticed anyways.
As a public meeting, 24 hours.
Yes.
Yes.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, June 14th. That's a motion. Do I have a second? Did somebody already? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other things that you want marked? I think, I understand the idea of having an app and papers and things, but I think a stake in the ground is really...
I agree.
Much easier to see.
Did you want to go through TEC's comments as well?
Yeah, we will. Just for the site walk, anything else you guys want to see? Okay. Can you go through the May 9th TEC comments?
Comment number one was in regards to the two utility poles. We're going to have to contact EverSource and work with them on resolving those issues. As far as the utility easement, it's our intent to abandon that. Again, we're working through those.
When you say abandon, how do you, how do you get rid of the easement?
It's my understanding that we're going to be working with the utility company, that that's no longer needed.
Okay.
The easement, easement is just a utility easement, right?
Correct. Those were, that's in regards to the comments 1 through 4 are all regarding the easement. Number 5 talks about the utility pole located in the swale. I haven't specifically looked at this issue yet, but I presume that we can come up with a solution that makes sense. Either moving the swale slightly or adjusting the location of the utility pole, if the utility pole is needed for the final build out of the site. Number 6 is about moving the snow storage. That can be accomplished pretty easily. Number 7 is in regards to showing the outline of the proposed stormwater devices, so that can be done on all the plan sheets. Number 8 is in regards to stormwater behind building number 1. And we agree that the grading behind this building's tight, that we're shedding stormwater towards the building. And we can look at improving drainage infrastructure behind there. Stormwater has a path to daylight. Number 9 is about test pit data within the stormwater basins. We see no issues with accomplishing that. Number 10's about including the swale in the hydroCAD model. Again, we can include that. Number 11 is in concerns to the proposed grading at the northern edge of the property. Again, we can look into relaxing some of the grade around there. We're trying to stay away from closed drainage in this portion of the property. We don't think it's needed. We think a swale can handle stormwater generated in that portion. We recognize that it is close to the property line. I think once we model the swale in the hydroCAD, we'll get real numbers, be able to tell.
Can we see that marked on the property for a site walk?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Like a limit of disturbance in that area or the base of the slope?
It sounds like their concern is more if something goes wrong and it does get blocked, that that could impact the neighboring property, so... So I guess it's more about how do you prevent that from happening?
Okay. I got you.
Is that...
Yeah. Perhaps the swale could get wider, deeper, that sort of thing. We can look into those. 12 is about the closed drainage.
And what, yeah, can you talk about that a little bit and why you're not wanting to do that? And what the alternative?
From my perspective, currently, the stormwater system as it's designed can handle the additional runoff that was generated with the increase in impervious surfaces. Like I said before, we can make revisions to the hydroCAD model to make that more accurate, to fully model that swale in question. But this sort of layout is pretty typical for this sort of site. Yeah, it would... Yeah, I think this design handles stormwater appropriately.
So those calculations take into consideration like wintertime conditions, where you have ice and buildup in the swale?
No, not explicitly. You're saying like ponded stormwater within the swale?
I mean, I wonder if that's what they're getting to. I mean, the old Bible verses, there's no, no post-development, not more post-development runoff than pre-development.
Right, and we do meet all those requirements at all of the storm events. The 2, the 10, the 25, and the 50-year storm event.
Well, maybe we'll have the engineer come out that day and do a site walk and he can then solve himself conditions.
Could I just, so just to clarify, so that I understand your position. So are you not open to considering closed drainage? Or, or, or would you be amenable to at least considering it?
We would consider it. We're trying to avoid it. I mean, like you see, things are tight in that area. We have utilities that are crossing in that area. And we believe the current system is adequate. But we would, we would be open to, if that's something that the board...
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to gauge, is your, okay.
Yes.
I mean, the monetary aspect of it is part of the basis for your suggestion of the current...
I'm sorry, I said it...
The monetary cost difference between the open drainage and the, and the enclosed structures that he's talking about is significant.
Potentially. Yeah. I wouldn't say that's a driving, yeah.
Is it long-term maintenance, or what, what's the reasoning that you don't want to do closed? And I'm not saying that we're saying one way or the other, but TEC brought it up for, for reasons.
Definitely maintenance would be one of them. The critters, little turtles and the things that get stuck in them. If they have sumps, you know, stuff definitely gets stuck.
Okay, so the, your plan right now is to do more accurate calculations, go back to TEC, and try to demonstrate that you're meeting the requirements?
Yes, and if, right, if that doesn't work out, then we're open to...
Adjust.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I think one of the points that TEC is trying to make is that there's such a grade there in the speed of water that plant life really can't establish with that speed of water. And I think that's why he's leaning towards closed drainage, so that water doesn't catch up speed and cause erosion.
Is there a typical detail of that swale on one of these pages?
That's a good question.
If erosion is concerned, is there some sort of erosion control that...
Yes, closed drainage.
Besides that.
We could do things like check dams or erosion control matting, or we could line the swale with riprap. There's other options to slow velocity.
So maybe that's something to consider then?
As we further refine the hydroCAD, we can compare that to the DES allowable velocities versus soil type. And that'll kind of give us an idea of whether or not we need erosion protection in those areas.
Yeah, it also guarantees that it's treated properly. That closed drainage goes into a treatment swale, and where that water is treated and then released into the wetland.
You know, perhaps that detail isn't, isn't here. We don't really need it tonight, but it would be helpful to have it for a site walk.
Figure that as a stop on the tour when we do the site walk. So the last couple of comments are about fire protection. Have you looked at that yet, about being able to get a fire engine in there?
I suspect the fire engine will fit. I have not done the drafting of it yet, but I did fit a WB62, a tractor trailer, so I'm going to assume that the fire truck will fit. I just need to draft it.
So just a procedural question, given that, you know, there's work to be done, and, you know, we'll have a site walk coming up, and then a ZBA will be weighing in. Is, once we conclude our discussion, would a motion be appropriate to continue this hearing? Okay, just asking procedurally. I mean, I'll go, go ahead and make that motion. We can still continue discussion. It doesn't, that's why I have to stop discussion. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue this hearing to... After the site walk, so that would be Ju-, June 19th?
That's, that's a holiday, sir.
Ah, okay.
That's my lesson with that.
So would the next meeting then be?
Juneteenth.
Yeah, right. And, okay, so, and then, so would the next meeting be July 3rd?
It would.
Yeah.
No, what do we have upcoming with the, with the...
Yes.
Hall Grant people, we're going to have, need to have another meeting, maybe just reschedule it the other night?
We can do both, but, yeah.
Because they may, we may need another meeting with them.
Yeah.
All right, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, so you can make the motion, but I don't, I don't want to vote on it yet because we want to keep talking.
Yeah, yeah, that's totally fine. I just thought I'd put the motion out there. We can keep discussing.
Just for parliamentary procedure, was there a second?
I'll second.
And to clarify, my motion was to continue to July 3rd.
Because I kind of want to go, sorry.
We'll, we'll hold off on voting until we...
Yeah, that wasn't meant to discuss, I just wanted to get the motion on the table.
One thing I wanted to ask about is lighting, because you are, you do have some pretty close neighbors. And we care about our dark skies ordinance, and want to make sure that whatever you've proposed is dark skies, and that it, whatever is installed remains dark skies. So I just want to put that on your radar, that that's something that we care about and want to make sure it doesn't disturb the neighbors.
There's a lighting diagram. I don't, I don't know if it's provided, oh, it is provided.
Want to highlight it.
Fair comment.
Other questions?
I do.
You have...
I wanted to get to, and the appropriate diagram. And that's... That's this building right here. So I am assuming that you're going to phase this development, and that this is an existing structure with on the property.
Yeah.
There have been compliance issues with getting these buildings up to code. So I would highly recommend that a motion be made as a condition of approval, that all buildings on site that are going to remain become compliant as part of an approval of this plan.
What have been the issues with the compliance?
I could get that folder. I would much rather you direct that question to Bob, our compliance officer.
What's your, so you have Phase 1, Phase 2. What's your timeframe for in-between? You have a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, but what's, what's the timing of it? Like, how long are you going to wait to do Phase 2? Sorry, can you introduce yourself for the record?
My name is Francesco Finicaro, one of the property owners. So I don't know that we've completely ironed out exact timing, but I believe the exact, the thought process is we would build the six units initially, possibly together with the building on the right, but initially the six-unit building. And then, once that's complete and mostly occupied, then we would continue into Phase 2 to finish off the project.
Okay. And in the meantime, your plans for that building and your thoughts on bringing it up to code?
Yeah, so that was what I was going to explain to you. So we've addressed all the concerns for occupancy issues of the building. The building inspector has been out, the fire inspector has been out, the electrical inspector has been out. All the electrical things have been up to code, re-inspected, finalized, and complete. Fire department has come out. He had a couple requests that we had to work around the person who was in the building to get done, because we had to remove some plywood and replace it with sheet rock to create a dividing wall. And that's in the works of being replaced this week. And then, so we just need to get them back out to do final inspection, and then everything's all set. So they've both been out. Everybody's been out. We had a small laundry list of, you know, fill this, close that up, lock this up. That's all been done. They just have to come out and do their final inspections. And everything will be in compliance for that.
So would you be comfortable if we were to, we're getting a few steps ahead of ourselves, but if, if an approval was conditioned on making sure all those things are checked off?
If that's what makes you feel comfortable, we should have approvals.
Before then.
If that's what makes you feel comfortable, we should have approvals, I would expect, within this mall.
Yeah, okay.
As far as the building...
That's what I would recommend.
Okay, and so it might be helpful, as you guys are going back and forth and addressing comments, to share that information with your application or, you know, with the updated drawings, just so it's all part of the record. Thank you. Any more questions from the board before we take public comments?
I do see just, oh, here on sheet D4 is your lighting diagram.
Okay.
Shows all the down-facing lights.
D4? I've, I've just seen these things change later, so that's...
I've seen none of the lines drive on for years.
Yeah. Um...
C4, not D4, D4?
Glenn, anything that we missed that you would like to raise?
No.
Are you sure?
No. Glenn, you might, might just explain to us on the bonding, now the TEC's come up with a bonding proposal?
No, that's not for this project, sir. That's a whole nother discussion.
Okay, so how would that work on a phase project? So you would just bond, but you, you, would you approve all the phases at once? And then bond, you'd have to bond everything that you, that you approved? So even though they may not build for a couple of years, you would still have to bond for the complete projects? Under a building permit?
Yeah.
Very good.
Most of the time, those bonding issues are, are, are drainage and, you know, they're not really, have anything to do with the building. So you could probably can finish off everything that's within your bond and get your bond money back without putting in a building. Yeah.
It'd be a great improvement if this, this is built out like this. It'd be a great improvement or what's that now? Really beneficial for the town.
Public comments?
Yes, Jimmy showed, uh, 329 Route 125 and 325 Route 125, speaking as a private citizen and in a butter. Um, I've reviewed the plans. Um, they've been great neighbors since they've purchased the property. I haven't had any problems with that at all. Um, and I think as, uh, as you said, that it would be a good improvement to the area, and I'm in favor of it. So just wanted to go on record with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments this evening? All right, um, so we have a motion on the table to continue the hearing to July 3rd. Any final discussion before we vote?
Ask about that?
Um, pardon, Mike.
I, I won't be able to make a meeting on July.
Oh.
Me either.
Me either, but...
Oh.
It's, it's a really, um, constrained time for a lot.
Yeah, um, so the next option is the 17th. The other option, um, I don't know how that works for your timing, if that's, if we're... I know you have to wait for the state on the driveway permit, so it is putting it out to July, middle of July hardship?
So we're trying to get... Do I have to introduce myself again?
No.
No, you're okay.
Um, so we're trying to get to after June 2nd, right?
Yeah, and we, we typically meet the first and third Thursdays. Um, the third Thursday of June is a holiday.
So the first Thursday, the 5th is no good?
You know, come up against the 4th of July holiday.
Well...
We're doing the, we're doing the site, we're doing the site walk.
Does it have to be the, could we do like the 31st or the 7th?
Can we do the site walk on June 7th?
Then we're back to June 19th, which is a holiday.
What about the 31st? Do we have some things?
Oh, yeah, we do. We can do two sidewalks in a day if people are up for that. We could do one at 9, one at 11. I just hate to put this out so far. The other option is to, because there's a holiday, we could meet the second Thursday if people were up for that.
Good idea. That's, that's probably more realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so... So since June 19th is canceled, we could meet on June 12th?
So I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and, uh, make a new motion that we continue the hearing to June 12th.
Does that work, does that work for you?
I'm just gonna say, I'm, I have new feelings on June 12th, but I have my comments in, maybe for the hearing. I don't want to be there. I will be in...
How about the 26th?
Is it the 2nd and the 4th?
No, it's just the 2nd.
Okay, so can you do the 26th? Okay.
Okay, um, I will withdraw, yes. I will withdraw my motion, uh, and move that we continue this hearing to June 26th.
25th, you said?
26th. It's the fourth Thursday of the month. So we don't meet the third Thursday because it's holiday, so we would meet on the 4th.
Do we have to post that?
We will have to post that, yeah. Is everybody good with that before we vote?
Yes.
Work? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
They've already...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so the site walk stands?
Site walk stands.
June 14th.
June 14th at 9:00 AM. And then we'll continue the hearing on June 26th.
Does that work for the applicant? Fine.
I think we already, we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a little, like, cold music.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, so we were going to have a discussion about, um, a potential legal issue, and I think we needed, you can come up. Um, we needed some advice about going into non-public, if that's something that, that we can do. We are, but we didn't want to keep you.
Okay, so, um...
Sure.
So I'm Laura Spector-Morgan from the Mitchell Group. Nice to see everyone. Um, so you can have a roll call motion to go into non-public meeting pursuant to RSA 90A32L, which is consultation with legal counsel.
Okay.
Well, I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, so, no, not all in favor. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, so for anybody who's watching, we are going to go into non-public session, so we'll take a pause. We're gonna turn the camera off, uh, but we will be back. Um, no more hearings tonight, but we do have some board business.
Probably what's gonna happen is I'll shut down the stream and then reopen it. It's gonna come up as two meetings.
I, I don't think so. He's a select board member.